Recording in progress.
Good evening. I call this meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Good evening. Ms. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Here.
Ms. Neesel?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver is on travel. Mayor Jordan?
I'm here. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection, thinking about several residents and former residents that have passed away since our last council meeting. Former residents Sharon Lee Beck and Patricia L. Viarden. Let's pause for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Councilmember McKinney, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. That's gonna take us to the first item, first section of our agenda, which is petitions and requests. This is an opportunity for residents and others to make a statement or to make a request to the city administration. As always, your meetings are open to the public, and if you have a petition or request, if you raise your hand, if you're in the room, after being recognized, you can go to the podium. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand, and after we recognize and promote you, you'll be able to speak. And if you're watching on cable TV, or Facebook, or YouTube, you can send an email to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So as always, we ask you to be civil in your remarks, and you know, three to five minutes is the standard. I believe it's five minutes that we've allocated for comments. So at this time, are there any petitions or requests? Ask Mr. Schacter, please.
Leon Schacter, 9B Parkway. I request that the current rule limiting citizen service on advisory committees or boards to one at a time be changed to permit qualified citizens of Greenbelt to serve on more than one organization at a time, provided the additional organizations meet only as needed. Some of those organizations, I think, an entire year may go by, and they don't meet at all because they're not needed. And I believe this change would open a window a little bit for qualified and interested citizens to be able to provide services, particularly if they're well-qualified for a particular second or possibly even a third board. Thank you.
Thank you. Other petitions or requests? Mr. Orleans?
Good evening, Bill Orleans. Without my notes. This has well been on the year since I first was inquiring about the closed meeting, which issued a statement, apologizing, clarifying an earlier statement of council regarding the Public Safety Committee's report from nearly 14, 15 months ago. That apology has never been extended by council, and now some are new to council, but being new to council doesn't, I think, exclude your complicity in something that I might think was a mistake to have been done. But some of you have been on council since that time and will well remember what you did in closed session, when I maintain, at least, you should not have. As I've suggested before, the interim city manager advised me that the solicitor said that council was well within its right to have taken that action, but the city solicitor has not been present at our regular meetings for about two years. There's no opportunity to engage in cockery with the solicitor about that. So I'm restating my request for both the apology and that the city solicitor begin coming to, at least occasionally, coming to our regular meetings. Last Wednesday, there was a work session with Franklin Park. I was instructed by the mayor, when I had suggested that folks on council and city management should take a look at that tape, that that tape hasn't been looked at, not by me, but that tape hasn't been looked at. So if my contention that Ms. Knight, a year ago, said one thing, and council disagrees with me, I nonetheless think that it would be appropriate, the technology, I think, exists, to project that tape in public meeting, so that if I'm wrong, I'll acknowledge that I'm wrong, and I'll stop saying this. But what I heard her say, and still believe I heard her say, was that they had done a study of homelessness in Franklin Park, that study having been vetted, so that the information they were convinced was accurate, that the increased homelessness in Franklin Park were from people from outside of Greenbelt, as contrary to my contention that if there was increased homelessness in Franklin Park, it might well have been former Franklin Park residents. But that notwithstanding, I would ask council and city management to arrange at the next regular meeting a showing of that tape, last about two minutes at the most. And if I'm wrong, I will apologize to council, and I will never bring this up again. But until that time, until there can be a full public discussion of what was said, by whom, and when, I restate my request that the city obtain a copy of that study, the community planning department obtain a copy of that study, and that regardless of what was said at that time, if there is increased homelessness in Greenbelt, and there's any study that suggests that that's the fact, the city ought to have that information so as we can better move forward. Lastly, it's been now only about five months since I read that council in closed session agreed to pay the former interim city manager a bonus. I don't know if there are other employees paid a bonus, but this was said, that it voted to pay this individual a bonus. And I'm awaiting the answer to my question. What statute in the state of Maryland or anywhere else enables this city council to appropriate city money in closed session? I look forward to that answer, as well as the other two, in a future meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Are there other petitions or requests? In the red there? Yes. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Malekhan G. Kerber, and I have been a longtime Greenbelt resident. Currently, I am not. However, the issue that I am coming before you is very much a very important one to the city of Greenbelt and our surrounding areas. And this pertains to the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School, which is currently on, I would say being, in the position of being moved by the PGCPS to another location far from Greenbelt. Currently, it is housed in the old Greenbelt High School, a historic building. And the county proposes to move Dora Kennedy French Immersion out of that to Kenmore, much further away, and then eventually tear down this building. And I'm coming to petition you all to stop this, to do the best that you can to not only prevent the students from being moved, but also keep the building from being torn down. As I said, this is a historic building to Greenbelt, and if we can't, you know, this is a problem of maintenance, not because the structure is not sound. The building is sound. I've been inside of it. If any of you have ever been inside of it, you can tell that is a solidly built structure. It is well-built and beautiful. And the only thing that is wrong with it is a lack of proper maintenance by the county. In terms of plumbing, in terms of HVAC, they have not done what they needed to do to upkeep and maintain this building. Our Capitol Building here in DC is much older than this and better maintained. Otherwise, we'd be tearing that down, too. As for the school itself, it brings families to this area, is one of the main attractions for a lot of families that want to move here, because it is a top-notch, public elementary school. I want to repeat that this is a public school. It may be a specialized school, it may be a magnet school with a specialty in French immersion, but it is full of public school students who live in this area, in Greenbelt, in College Park, in Berwyn, in Laurel, this entire area. The majority of the students live here. They are also community members, and they matter. And for the county to make this decision without input from families, from staff, because none of the faculty were also consulted, and many are wondering if they will stay with the school. In two years, this plan is meant to be implemented in two years, to move the students out, and then they would bring in another set of students for two years, and then after that, tear down the building. And this makes no sense. In January 10th meeting, I believe some of you were in that meeting with the county, and proposed that the county poll families, and poll the staff, and let them know about this plan. The county didn't do this. In fact, many families found out about this only a few weeks ago through an article that was published in Greenbelt, and everyone was shocked, because this was not announced, it wasn't, no one was questioned, no one was interviewed, no one found out how many families actually live in the area. They didn't seem to care. They just want to move the school out to an area that would make it impossible for many to attend. I'm already talking to parents who are planning to look for ways to move their kids out, and many will go to private schools in the area, because they chose this school because of how good it is. It's a blue-ribbon school, and has gotten five stars. It is one of the schools that raises our test scores countywide, statewide as well. So to make this kind of careless decision, to me, seems extremely foolhardy by PGCPS, and I think that at a local level and a state level, we need to do the best that we can to get PGCPS to turn back from what was, in their own words, "a bad decision." You can find out more about this if you visit savedkfi.com. We also have a video there where during a recent meeting in February, there was a hot-mic moment where PGCPS members admitted that this was a poorly thought-out decision, and that they actually don't have illegitimate reason to do this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. What was that website again?
Savedkfi.com.
It's all one word?
Yes, savedkfi.com, all one word, no spaces. And you'll find on their prior meetings video, including the hot-mic moment video, and lots of other information about the efforts being made so far by both the PTA and parents like myself, who are trying our best to draw attention to this, and get all of you and all of our surrounding cities and towns to get involved, to keep the school where it is, and to save the building.
Well, thank you. We were shocked on December the 10th to find out about this proposal. So we're working with our sister municipalities and working on our own. So thank you.
Thank you. We are all working. So let us know at DKFI what we can do, because we are all, we want to save the school, we want to keep our kids there. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, this is important for the administration and council, and there's a letter in the consent agenda requesting a review of the site for historical preservation.
We should pull that off so we can talk about it. Are there other petitions and requests? Please come to the microphone, sir. And if you could state your name and where you live in Greenbelt, more or less.
Good evening, council. My name is Guillermo Ingabrixen Guero. I live in Hanover Parkway, along Hanover Parkway, 6622 Lake Park Drive. I'm a resident of Greenbelt for almost, I think, 17 years, and I'm the president of the Roosevelt Democratic Club. I would just like to present this check of $250 to the council to help in the emergency assistance fund. That's all.
Thank you. That's very generous. City manager, will you accept that? Is anybody have a camera? Does anyone have a camera?
Better background.
Background.
We have choices. Yeah, get the white lines. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so, Jet, so it's the Eleanor and Franklin Roosevelt Democratic Club, and how often do you guys meet?
We usually meet monthly, and for March, we have a Women in Politics meeting.
For Women's History Month?
Yes, for Women's History Month.
Oh, excellent. Excellent.
It's on March 17 at 7:00 PM at the Greenbrier Terrace Room.
At Greenbrier Condominiums?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, thank you. So thank you for that generous contribution to the Emergency Assistance Fund. It helps when individuals, families get displaced and have no other alternative. Through Greenbelt Cares, that funding is dispersed, depending on the need. So it's a city-managed fund that always is in need of contributions. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there are no further petitions or requests, let's go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda, which should actually be approval of the consent agenda. And I'd like to propose that we pull off the item regarding the historic, item number 19. I'd like to pull that off of the consent agenda.
Second.
So I'd like to, all in favor of pulling that off the consent agenda, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like a majority to me.
Okay, aye?
Okay.
Aye.
Two, three, four.
So I'd like to propose or move that we adopt the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
No, Ms. Pope was seconded.
I did.
So all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And that will bring us to the agenda itself. Are there any amendments or changes or additions to the agenda? Well, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda as modified.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you so much. So that brings us to item number seven, and we don't have any presentations tonight. So that would bring us to item number eight. And item number eight, we've got closed session, statement for the record, closed session, February 12, 2024. Ms. Pope, will you, I should read this first. Closed session of February 12, 2024, the following motion is needed. In accordance, will you go ahead and make this motion, Ms. Pope?
Read it, or do you want me to just move it along?
Just go ahead. Make the motion. Okay. Closed session, February 12, 2024, the following motion is needed. In accordance with the General Provisions Article, Section 3-06(c)(2) of the Annotated Code of Public General Laws of Maryland, I move that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that council met in closed session on Monday, February 12, 2024, at 11:10 PM in council chambers of the municipal building, 25 Crescent Road, and held this closed meeting in accordance with Section 3-305(b)(3) and (8) of the General Provisions Article of Annotated Code of Public General Laws of Maryland, I.1. To consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto, and (2).2. To consult with staff, consultants, or others, individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Purpose of this meeting, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Vote to closed session.
I think you gotta read the whole, the whole motion, then.
Just add.
I know I did, but humor me.
You asked me before, and then you did. I can't move it until it's all red. So you want me to continue, or you're gonna continue?
No, I want you to continue.
Okay. Vote to closed session. Ms. McKinney, yes. Ms. Pompey, yes. Ms. Pope, yes. Mr. Roberts, no. Ms. Neesel, yes. Ms. Weaver, yes. Mayor Jordan, yes. Staff members in attendance, Josue Salmoron, city manager, and Terry Ruby, director of planning. Other individuals were in attendance, representatives of property owners, until 12:16 AM on, AM, I was like, on February 13. Council took no action during this session. I move to approve this.
Okay, we'll need a second. Councilmember McKinney has seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on this, please?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Pope.
You're much welcome.
So that's gonna bring us to item number nine, administrative reports.
Hi, good evening, council. We've had a lot of things happen this week. I was away for a few days, but all things went well. There's been a couple issues that we've been dealing with at Charleston North Apartments, and I'm happy to report that today, this afternoon, a judge has approved the receivership motion. So effective, effective today, the receivership was approved. So we'll be meeting tomorrow with the legal team and the property management team that's going to be taking over our Charleston North Apartments, and we'll work on an immediate plan on the priority items, code violations, and other services that need to be secured for the property.
Ms. Pope?
Quick question about the water issue that we were, we had. Is that taken care of?
It has for the short-term basis. So we have, we received disconnect notices for water, electricity, and solid waste services. Both utility providers have placed a hold on the disconnect. The water district was very generous in their, in their allowance of time, so they did not give us a deadline. Pepco, on the other hand, has given us until March 8th to come up with a solution. Fortunately, we've got the receivership approved today, so we'll have an immediate plan to how to address those, those issues. What that immediate plan looks like is an advance, an advancement of funds to protect the building, and that's gonna be done by the bank, by Freddie Mac. So we appreciate their efforts of jumping in and advancing funds to stabilize the property. With the gas, we do not have a notice of disconnect gas. We do, are aware of the outstanding bills, so we're not concerned with that. And solid waste, we'll be working to reestablish those services this week.
Right. Awesome. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what will the city do if there are needs that arise between now and when the receivership goes into place?
So the receivership goes into effect today when the judge signed the order, and we expect the team to be on the ground working this week. We've been dealing with this, with this property for some time, so there, we hope that some of the individuals that have been involved with the property are able to continue their service with the property, because they have intimate knowledge of the operations of the building. I can't speak for the property manager or the legal team, but that's something we're advocating so that there's no disruption of services to the residents.
Okay, okay. And to be clear, it's Freddie, Freddie Mac was the holder of the mortgage, and they're the ones that filed for foreclosure and for receivership in the interim. So what steps will Freddie Mac have to take in order to put this in place?
In the immediate future, just to get a property management company in place to stabilize the property. Long term, I think an owner of the, a new owner would have to be identified, but neither us or Freddie Mac is in the position to talk about those next steps, since right now, the legal actions have been taken are twofold. There's a foreclosure process and a receivership process. So the receivership process has been approved, the foreclosure process is a much more extended process that Freddie Mac would have to deal with, with the owner. I would say that, like anyone else, the owners are entitled to have their day in court, and so they'll have the ability to defend themselves if they so choose to do so. So that could be an extended issue.
Well, it's, it's good that progress is being made, and you know, for, for us, you know, the, the safety and health of the residents there is utmost concern. Ms. Pope?
So I just wonder, so now that this part, you know, is taken care of, so to speak, are we gonna, are we asking to be kept informed about the progress? Because, you know, just in case, I mean, I would like to know, and if there's anything that we can do to assist with in the meantime, and I mean, there's a, it's a big process, and there's a lot of things that, you know, go into that process. So I just want to make sure that, you know, now that there is certain steps moving forward, that we're not just set by the side and like, okay, that was it for you. Basically, I just want to make sure that we, we're being informed.
We, we made a commitment to the residents, and I intend to keep my commitment to the residents, or staying involved until the property has a new owner.
And do the entities know that who are involved, that we made that commitment?
Yes, yes. Freddie Mac is aware. We'll get to meet the property management company tomorrow, Tarantino Property Management. I understand there's no association with Quentin Tarantino.
That might be bad news.
But we intend to stay involved.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I really want to thank you for, for your work on this, and just staying on top of this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to thank you for, for what you've done so far. I, I was under the impression maybe this was gonna take a lot longer, but I'm glad this, what happened, happened. So, but I think in the, in the long term, I think, you know, maybe we ought to think about talking with HUD about maybe financing, or going together with the city like we did on Green Ridge House, and maybe turn this building into another senior housing for the city. Because I would hate to see us go through all this stuff, you know, receivership and foreclosure and everything, for just another similar owner to take over and go through the same thing over and over again, because that seems to be, you know, something that's happening often nowadays. So, you know, keep that in the back of our minds. Maybe that's something we should look at. Thank you.
I will. I will keep that in mind and explore any opportunities that come before us. There's some lessons learned for us out of this, out of this situation, and there are two things that we're going to explore, and I hope to come to council with a recommendation. Currently, we do not have a robust right of first refusal in tenant protection laws like DC does or Montgomery County does. So I think there's an opportunity for city council to explore legislation to provide greater protection for residents. So that's one, one avenue we, I'm looking to explore. The second will be, what can we do from a code enforcement perspective to provide greater protections for our residents? So those are two areas we'll, we'll explore and hope to be able to make a recommendation to council on additional protections.
Who will take responsibility for communicating with the residents, sort of the next steps in the process, so that it's clear? This is a lot of language, a lot of... So that it's clear, this is a lot of language, a lot of legal terms, and I just wanna make sure that they're comfortable understanding what's going to be coming over the next couple of months.
It's an excellent question. The, with Freddie Mac, we have agreed on, on initial coordinated message. We want the residents to feel reassured that when they're told to pay rent, that it's coming from a legitimate source and that their interests are being protected. So the, tomorrow's conversation with Freddie Mac will coordinator messaging. And so that message is gonna be coming from the city and then provide information of who they should expect additional contact from. So that's our handoff approach.
You know, my, my other issue in terms of lessons learned is with the utility companies. You know, apparently, the, the amount of debt, the missed payments were quite substantial. You know, over fifty thousand dollars or more. So, you know, anytime a multifamily development such as Charleston North or any other apartment development gets in, into trouble that much, you know, it, they should really let the city know what's going on. Because if we suddenly had to relocate three hundred residents, that would be, that would put us in a state of emergency. So somehow, you know, I think we need to also look at that and work with the utilities. Because the, the situation has never really happened in Greenbelt before, and I wouldn't want it to happen again. Of course, we talked about that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me that. I, I, I sound smart at times, and those ideas about where we come back with, those have been the conversations I've had with, with the mayor about how do we, how do we provide the best protections for our residents, look out in the interest. So the two items that I mentioned earlier, they've really evolved through conversations with the mayor and exploring opportunities of how we, we better serve our residents. And the third piece is this, this, this item that the mayor just mentioned, which is how do we create procedures so that if there is a utility company that's going to cut off utilities for such a number of residents, how do we ensure that there's procedures that they have to inform us? Because currently, they don't. And so we could be in a situation where we had thirty residents lose water on a Friday night, and we've had no way of responding to it. So we wanna prevent those kinds of things from happening. So thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that. That's, those are things that we'll, we'll explore together.
Please, please continue on. We'll pause for some questions after you finish your report, Ms. Pope.
I just wanna also say, you know, I mentioned the generosity of the service providers because I think they've been very gracious for a period of time that we were not, that we were unaware of, right? So, and I'm sure the other issue with, with keeping us informed has something to do with confidentiality procedures they have with their, with their contractor, basically, right? So, but, but I do agree to, you know, if we could find a way around that and, and see that we can be informed, because that is a serious issue.
It is, and to your point, they're very generous with their, with their accommodations of this property. They're, they're over a hundred and twenty thousand owed in utilities, so it's a substantial amount of money.
Ms. Pope?
I was just wondering if there are any legal actions that are gonna be pending or anyone's taking any legal action against the, the property owner. I know that possibly the residents could, but if there's any other greater legal action, like maybe Freddie Mac or some, someone's gonna take other action against them for their, because it seems like there could be some malfeasance involved here, especially because they were certainly collecting utilities to a point. So it's, maybe they weren't paying them, though, so.
Those are issues that, you know, we're looking into with the state and other agencies.
If it was up to me, we'd be pursuing them for a lot of things, but it's not up to me. Our enforcement, we continue our enforcement actions with them. So if you were to look up the case search, you would see that we filed numerous municipal infractions. So those have exceeded over thirty four thousand. And we wanted to be consistent in our application of, of our local, local laws because we were unsure where this was going. So we're gonna continue to do our jobs and, and put pressure on the owner to correct the fire hazards and safety hazards in the property. So we've continued our court enforcement, and we're gonna continue that until we have some level of certainty that the new property management is taking control of the situation and is addressing those issues. So those will continue until we have a resolution that's on our end from, from other parties. The, I know the citizens have filed complaints with the office on attorney general, and we, we would not be entitled to any information, any open investigations that that office has. Thus, their process is not to say whether they're taking action or not. The Freddie Mac and the, this, the loan servicer, they're doing everything that they can to, to move forward with the property, the foreclosure, the receivership. And I give them credit, they, they've jumped on board with us to file those, the, the foreclosure, the motions, the emergency motions to, to appoint a receiver. They sent, the, the, the court could not address it right away for whatever reasons. And the legal team at Freddie Mac did send representatives to try to get face time with, with the judge to ensure that this was a tight priority for them. So those are the rem of legal, legal actions being pursued.
As far as our outstanding fines against them, obviously, you know, they're still in violation because nothing's been fixed yet, but would, is there an opportunity to possibly forgive some of those fines? As there's now, Freddie Mac has taken it into receivership, and they're, if they're putting forth a good faith effort to actually fix things.
Yes, yes, we can negotiate through those, through those fines like we can with the license. So right now, there is no rental license. So we, we have the ability of granting temporary license, rental license for the building to operate, and they have to meet certain conditions. We'll talk through those, through those issues tomorrow. I think I've shared with council that our priority from the beginning was to keep the families in place. And we wanted to, we were working collaborative with the previous owner because what we cared about was the, the issues being resolved. So that's, that's still our approach with the new management company in Freddie Mac is that we wanna be a partner in ensuring that the, the co- violations are addressed and that the residents there have access to a safe and dignified housing. And so that's our approach. We'll work through the legal issues we have to get some resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that detailed update. Appreciate that. Please go on.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, I committed to do on a walk through the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. We've conducted that. We, we have a long laundry list of things that we're going to address on the property. So just brief update that we're working on the, on the recreation facility. The rec, the spring guide is out, so I encourage you to see it online. Share it. It's a beautiful, beautiful guide. Highlights all the great work that Recreation is doing. Continuing the, on Recreation, the camps have opened. We have two of the camps are full already, but there's still some space on, on some of the camps. So where's the camera? There's still time, so please sign up.
Al? Yeah, councilmember.
I, I had seen or heard some comments that came through Facebook that there had been some challenges. I knew that you were transitioning to a new online system, and I wanted to see if those were corrected. So some people hadn't gotten notice yet on whether or not their payments went through. So just wanted to double check to make sure that that's the case, and if you could communicate. Some people said that they had, some people said that had been about forty eight hours, and they hadn't heard anything yet.
I'll double check on that. I know that the team is following up with, with folks to collect payment via call. So, but I'll, I'll check to make sure that everyone who has been accepted into a camp has been informed of payment options and whatnot.
See, just real quick, gotten a few complaints about S H A and resurfacing the road over by Hanover Parkway and Greenbelt Road. Now, I, and so many people are thankful that they are moving ahead, but the timing has been very, very difficult. They were out there working on the project at nine o'clock this morning, right when folks were trying to get into the school. I think some students were actually late, so getting to school because of the, the traffic backup. I know there's not a whole lot that we can do about that. But do, do we have any information? When are they going to be finished? This week?
I did not get notice on the project. Mr. Kim, did you, do you have any information? Okay, we do not, but we'll make sure to get information to you.
Someone had suggested, well, why don't they do that at midnight or sometime after dark? But if they did that, it would be so loud, it would wake everybody. It would violate our noise ordinance. But still, it's challenging. And finally, so you're going to be, you're gonna be on vacation for a little?
Yes, that's correct. I'll be on vacation starting Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon, and I'll be out for two weeks. I'll be back on in the office March thirteenth.
And you'll be sending us postcards?
Yeah, sure.
I'll be thinking of all of you.
He's sending good vibes to you.
Okay, before we move on.
I, I have, I have, I have one thing, and, and it's the dog park, and I think I've sent an email, right?
Yes.
So, so there was a little issue with, well, there was an issue with the dog park, apparently. So from what I read and from what I've, I've talked to that person myself, a dog was bit by a bigger dog, right? And apparently, the dog done defense, or there was some kinda, there was some kinda altercation between the two dogs. So one of the dogs is now is injured, has tubes, drainage tubes, and the young, the lady has, of course, her, her veterinarian bill and did receive a phone number and everything from the person who, the, the other dog's owner, but now can't reach the person, and, you know. Now, unfortunately, the report was not made immediately, which, which, you know, I, I said right away, maybe, you know, if something like this happens, you need to report it. So she did call the police, and it was that, well, there's not much we can do because it was a dog to dog and not a dog to person, you know. But I just wanted to ensure that, you know, we're gonna look into this because I think possibly that the other people with the bigger dogs did not have Greenbelt, you know, the registration for their dogs, et cetera. So at one point, I think we need to maybe discuss how we can maybe make our dog park a little bit more secure. Because of course, you know, this happened, and then other people say, well, you know, this happened to me, and this happened this. So I think there might be some issues that we may wanna explore and then maybe get together and see how can we make our dog park a safe place for our residents, and especially the ones who register? Because we wanna make sure the animals are vaccinated and healthy, just in case something does happen. I mean, it's animals, something can always happen, you know, it's never a foolproof situation. But, but things seem to happen, and I, in the meantime, would like to ask that we can keep a close eye on the dog park and maybe do some regular checks on who is entering our dog park.
Thank you, councilmember. It's an unfortunate situation. I, you know, it, it's such a nice asset, and we want everyone to benefit from it. And we, unfortunately, we can't police it, and we expect people to be kind and thoughtful of each other, and accidents happen. But that's okay. Accidents happen, and people need to be responsible. So it's unfortunate that, that these things happen too. But I'll ask the team to look into it. Right.
But I think, I just think overall, we need to maybe, you know, get it from a newer perspective and see how can we make it maybe a little safer or a little?
So I'll discuss it with the team, and I welcome any feedback on how we can implement cost-effective solutions that get us better results. Thank you.
Finally, I, I understand Buddy Attic Lake was closed for a period today. There's a missing person investigation.
Yes.
Nothing was found, is that?
Right, there, there. I, I, we'll, we'll put out a more thorough message. I don't wanna speak off the cuff because I don't wanna alarm folks, but we were collaborating with another law enforcement agency on a, on a search that they were conducting for a missing person, and they thought that they, the lake could be associated with their search, and they conducted a search with divers, but nothing turned up. So nothing to be alarmed by at this point, but we'll, we'll provide a more complete message for the benefit of council and the public.
Very good. Thank you so much. I think we're going to pause for a question before we move on. Okay. Sir?
Thank you. The suggestion made by Mr. Roberts that Charleston North be considered similarly to the project, HUD project at Green Ridge House is interesting. I, I don't know how successful that would be, but it's interesting. But I know in speaking with at least one of the tenants of Charleston North, he expressed interest in, during this process of change, the building being converted into a co-op. And I don't know, since I was not privy to the meetings with Freddie Mac, I have no way of knowing if Freddie Mac would be willing to participate in converting the building to a co-op. I don't know ultimately the role of the previous owner, and I don't know the nature of Tarantino management, property management, if they would be a candidate for future ownership of the building. But to the extent that, and I'd like to know more about Tarantino management, but to the extent that we, all of us, on behalf of the residents of that building, are interested in their welfare and the city's future, conversion from a ownership, tenant-based property to a co-op, housing co-op would probably be preferable to the city's interest than another out-of-town, out-of-state owner. Thank you.
That's excellent feedback, and before I answer that, I, I'd like to thank Mr. Bill Orleans. He's been a great ally to the residents of Charleston North and attending meetings and pointing resources. And I think it's, it's benefited the, the residents and the administration. The, with the idea of the cooperative, it sounds great. I have, I have a delicate line to, to walk in our enforcement activities. So at this moment, we're focused on stabilizing the property and ensuring the proper receivership. So I, I'm limited with pushing any, any agendas for the city in terms of ownership at this moment. When the time comes for us to be able to do that, we will have, we will have a waste at the table and hope to be able to use that to help the residents and the, and the, the, the bank find the best owner for the property. Maybe it's a cooperative, and if that is, it, it's a possibility, we will, we'll be supportive of that. If it's another entity, a nonprofit, or, or even the city, I will keep an open mind and explore those opportunities when the time comes. I feel I have to be sensitive to walk the enforcement line, the enforcement responsibilities I have now, and not conflict with the, the future ownership of the property. So that's as best as the answer I can give you now, Mr. Orleans, because I have a, a duty to enforce code issues at the property at this moment.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, item number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, my, I'm sorry to interrupt. We, in part of our administrative reports, I wanted to highlight that we have Mr. Darryl Carrington joining us, who's our consultant for the legislative support. We've been talking about numerous bills that require immediate attention. Some of them are, are before you today to make a decision. And I just wanna acknowledge Mr. Carrington and his, and, 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 and his firm on the work that they're doing for, for the city and how they're gonna help us advance our, our, our agenda forward at the county level and the state level. And if you had any questions, he's available now, or we can discuss it at the legislative review section of the agenda.
Very good. Mr. Carrington, would you like to say hello briefly?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Salmaran and Mr. Mr. George. For the record, Darryl Carrington here on behalf of Carrington and Associates LLC. I can't tell you how very happy and excited and humbled and pleased we are to, to have heard that we were selected amongst some of the most reputable firms and people who we consider our friends that we were able to beat out for this honor. We are looking forward to working hand in hand with your city manager and your assistant, who we've already been flooding with emails and information. As we said, our proposal to you all, we know that we were gonna start in the middle of this legislative session, so we were gonna hit the ground running, and we intended that. Just by way of background for some of your residents who may not be familiar with me and my big cowboy hat, Carrington and Associates has been around since two thousand and six. We have worked on some of the highest profile issues in the state of Maryland. We've worked on marriage equality, which took us about seven years, but we made that the law of the land. We've worked on trans rights, getting rid of the death penalty and raising the minimum wage. We've worked on medical cannabis, adult use, and we've done boring stuff like biotax credits and speed cameras and things of that nature. So we have been very fortunate to work with every committee in Annapolis. I grew up under what I call the Mike and Mike Show, the Mike and Mike Show, which is Senator Mike Miller and, and Coach Mike Bush. They were brilliant men, good guys, personal friends, and it taught me an awful lot about the legislative process and how to conduct yourself in Annapolis. So we're gonna take all of those skills and all of those knowledge and all of those contacts and our passion and natural ability of getting our passion and natural ability of getting results done and hopefully do all of those things for Greenbelt. So we look forward to this opportunity and we're looking forward to working with all of you. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions that the mayor, council or staff may have.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Carrington. We're looking forward to, uh, to working with you, your advice and counsel as we uh, move the city's legislative priorities ahead. That's, uh, that's the point. So it's great to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Were there any questions from council? Okay. Hey, let's go ahead now and move to item number 11. And that's Metro's FY 2025 proposed service changes. And, uh, we've got Jamie Fearer, who is our Assistant Director of Planning with us. Let me just read through this. On February 8th, 2024, the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority released a plan outlining a revised FY 25 budget based on preliminary financial commitments from Metro's precedent at $750 million budget deficit in the coming year. The FY 25 proposed budget includes service cuts, workforce reductions, and fare and parking rate increases that would be effective on or around July 1st, 2024. If additional funding is not secured, the proposed changes would fundamentally reduce transit accessibility in Greenbelt and be detrimental to the city's transit users. In summary, service eliminations, reductions and changes specific to Metro bus routes servicing Greenbelt include the elimination of Metro bus routes G12 and R12, service reductions on Metro bus routes C2, C4, T18, 83 and 86, and route changes on Metro bus T14. The proposed elimination of G, the G12 route and the R12 route would directly and adversely affect some of Greenbelt's most vulnerable residents. And staff also believes that it would be short-sighted to eliminate and/or otherwise reduce Metro bus service to the Greenbelt Metro station. Staff recommends the city council submit a letter, uh, on the Womata FY 25 proposed fare and service changes opposing the elimination of Metro bus service serving the city of Greenbelt and stating the concerns highlighted above with a particular emphasis on the elimination of the Metro bus G12, which was originally developed, the, uh, the route uh, in collaboration with the city and local transit advocates and provides vital service to areas of the city that otherwise are not served. Uh, Ms. Fearer, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You covered all of it. My agenda comments are always so long, it feels like. Sorry about that. Um, so I think this is not necessarily an annual occurrence, but a frequent occurrence, uh, with Metro and their budget. But this year, um, we are once again looking at a number of cuts that would affect Greenbelt if they cannot, um, close a pretty substantial budget gap. And so, um, I don't have a presentation per se, but, um, there is a PDF if you wanted to pull up the routes, just to see them visually.
Yes, let's, uh, let's pull up that PDF of the routes.
Uh, attachment. Again, there are other service changes, but the, the two that we highlighted the most were the G12, um, which is this route here.
That's the one that goes up Southway and around Crescent and around Ridge Road and then back down to Roosevelt Center and then out?
Yep. And it connects, um, Greenbelt Station to New Carrollton Station. Um, so they are eliminating, Metro is eliminating, uh, proposing to eliminate this route in its entirety, um, as well as the R12. So I think two more pages down, we can see that one.
The R12, that's the route that goes from Beltway Plaza down to Minnesota Avenue?
Goes, yeah, down to the Deanwood Station, all the way from Greenbelt Station to Deanwood Station. It, it services, Franklin Park, Beltway Plaza.
Does it originate in, in, uh, at the Greenbelt Metro? I guess it does originate.
It also goes to College Park, uh, the College Park Station.
College Park Metro?
So it also connects residents to the College Park Station. So those two are, they are proposing to eliminate. There's some substantial changes to a number of other routes. Um, I can go over those briefly as well.
C2 and C4, those are very important links between Greenbelt and Montgomery County, if you wanted to get out to Wheaton from here. And a lot of people work out there.
If you don't mind continuing to scroll, I do have, uh, the snapshots of each of these routes in there. So that is the C2 and C4. Um, that is a service reduction proposal. The, so service after midnight would be eliminated and there would be no alternative service after midnight. And if I could step back just one second. That for the G12 and the, um, R12, Metro has proposed alternative service. It is in your packet, um, but we would argue it's not, it doesn't actually cover enough. It, it includes other bus routes that are also proposed to have some type of service elimination or, um, the bus, which doesn't often, uh, doesn't have great frequency, does not have, um, good weekend service, if any weekend service at all. Um, and so those routes don't necessarily cover it. Um, with the T18, they are proposing, uh, no service after midnight as well, no alternative service after midnight. So these are more, um, sort of tangential to the city. They came up during the Better Bus Network discussion and that's why I highlight them in this memo, just that they are, uh, other services that folks from Greenbelt do connect to, but may not directly, uh, impact Greenbelt as far as the routes coming through the city of Greenbelt. Routes 83 and 86.
83 and 86, those are the routes that connect Greenbelt to Laurel or to, to north. If you're trying to get to IKEA or Beltsville, you would have to take.
The proposal here is to eliminate all service on Saturday and Sunday. So all weekend service would be eliminated on 83 and 86. And then finally, um, the T14, which is the Rhode Island Avenue, New Carrollton line, um, the service, this one can be a little confusing. But the service would be shortened so that the route would operate only between Mount Rainier and New Carrollton Metro Station. Right now, it services, um, all the way into the district of the Rhode Island Avenue Metro Station.
So there was a change for the G14. Were they proposing some sort of a modification in the route to compensate for eliminating the G12?
No, uh, with the, oh, with the G, with the G12?
G14.
Elimination? There's, uh, no change in the G14.
So they wouldn't be moving the route in, into old Greenbelt to compensate?
So what they are proposing, and it is in the packet that had, uh, that has these images, the, the route maps. They're proposing alternative service, um, on the G14, which they are not changing the alignment of the bus 15X, which is, um, rush-only service during Monday through Friday and the bus 16.
Have we heard anything from the county about bus service recently?
From, no, there's, the last we heard that they're still working on their transit plan as well. We were in a meeting a few months back, but have not, um, heard further. I have heard a little bit of rumblings that, uh, that we might see some better bus implementation, like year one implementation coming up, but I think this is taking precedence over that. Um, to see what happens first as far as service reductions and eliminations. And I just wanted to highlight the other changes. So that, again, that is, I think those are the biggest impacts for the city. Um, Metro Rail will be affected as well as far as frequency. Um, weekday trains would run every 15 minutes and weekend trains would run every 20. Um, a little confusing on its reduction of service hours. Um, but they would typically be closing earlier, around 10:00 PM, at least Monday through Thursday. Maybe staying open a little bit later on the weekends. Um, a question that often comes up when there are reductions proposed is Metro Access. About 20% across the board, about 20% of Metro Access trips would be affected by the proposed changes. From what I can tell from the map that was provided, the boundary within Greenbelt itself, Greenbelt proper, would not be affected. Um, although the service boundary does shrink in towards Greenbelt. So in that sense, there's a, there's an effect. Um, the service times would change to meet the same service times as Metro Rail and Metro Bus. So if those are reduced, the service times that Metro Access is available will be reduced as well. Um, some parking and, um, fare increases.
Are they proposing a, an increase in parking?
They are. They're proposing a 25% fare increase and a 20% parking rate increase, um, as well as, uh, some changes to the rate of the bike lockers at Metro stations.
It's bad.
Um, and as far as I can tell, I didn't dig too deep. The capital budget is proposed to be fairly similar to last year's. They're proposing, um, a 2.6 billion capital budget. Um, they can move some money from the capital budget to the operating budget, but they are proposing a number of operating budget cuts as a part of this as well that will affect staff.
Thank you. It's really disturbing, uh, news. Uh, not completely unanticipated, you know, so Metro has been so challenged over the past few years, ever since the pandemic. And some of these proposed cuts, like, uh, the after midnight service, I, didn't they just, we didn't really have that before. They just kind of added this, uh, service on the, the C2 and C4 and other routes after midnight. So it's like they added it. Now they're taking it back. It's after two or three months. So.
I don't remember when exactly it was added, but it may have been a recent addition. Yeah.
Uh, I was at a, uh, Metro and Washington Council of Governments Board meeting, uh, the last one that we had two weeks ago. And Randy Clark, who's the CEO of Womata was there and he was talking a little bit about the funding crises that they're, they're facing. One thing he said is that they're thinking about actually, uh, taking some money from, uh, capital to, to use it in the operating budget. And that's also a little scary, given the, the track record of Womata with, uh, problems with some of the Metro trains. But this whole thing is, is really disturbing. And, and just regionally, you know, our, our governor, Governor Westmore, uh, has promised an additional $150 million towards Womata's budget to help stabilize things. And I believe the District of Columbia has also made a commitment, but, uh, Virginia is sort of wavering in, in their support. So hopefully these proposed cuts are something to help motivate people to the jurisdictions to increase their funding. But I, I'd like to write a really strong letter, uh, just in terms of the service cuts, particularly for the G12. Also with the, uh, fare and the parking increases, you know, I think that's really, I think it's wrong, the way that they have, uh, worked out the, uh, the way that fares are charged. And we're, we're an outlying area, so we, we, people from Greenbelt pay the, the highest amount for fare. I believe it's capped at $6.25, but when you couple that with parking, which I believe is $4 now, it's like we're paying the most for the least amount of service on Metro Rail. And with the bus service, with the G12, that, that's like a lifeline to many of our residents that commute to, uh, work with the federal government or with contractors. Uh, it's just really, uh, really harmful to us. So I think that we should write a letter. I'd like to move that we write a letter, highlighting those actions. But also I, I think we should coordinate with our sister municipalities and the four cities, and I believe they'll concur. But I don't want to monopolize the discussion.
I did attach a draft letter for your review, um, if you'd like to review that. I did see, I think last year, you all submitted a letter with the four cities.
What, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
So I move, so I second your motion.
Okay.
I was hoping we could just have a little discussion before we were making motions.
You can, you can still. This is just second, so it's on the, on the table.
Great. So, um, I thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for all the work you've done on this. I think one thing that these cuts really highlight is the fact that Metro has been chronically underfunded for decades. Um, they're not cutting service out of spite. They're cutting service because they don't have any money. So I'm wondering if in addition to, um, sending a letter that, you know, um, a strongly worded letter about the cuts here to our city, if we can't also send a letter supporting, um, you know, to, to the governor, to our representatives, that support, that asks them to support, you know, funding to make Metro more fiscally stable, like that's, that's our responsibility, um, as a state. Um, we're one of three, but we, we do have a role to play in this. And I think that as a municipality, we need to advocate that we are playing that role and trying to stabilize Metro, because this is only going to keep happening, um, as it has been happening year after year after year.
One of the issues is that by legislation, Metro cannot accept more than 3% I, um, from each jurisdiction. I'm not getting the language quite right, but it's legislation I think that would have to be changed as you allude to at the state level in order for Metro to even accept more funding, um, to help cover some of these costs.
I, I believe Maryland, Governor Moore, he's already stepped up. That $150 million commitment was a little bit more than, uh, than they had expected. So, uh, it's, it's those other jurisdictions that start with a V that are a little problematic. Mr. Roberts?
Well, I think that, uh, you know, there's a lot of problems why we have this recurring problem. Uh, but I think that one of the big ones is the fact that here in the state of Maryland and throughout the Washington area, you know, Virginia and the rest, we spend way more money on our highways and our vehicles than we do on, on public transportation. That's a fact. You look at the numbers, it's a huge, a huge difference. And I don't think in other, uh, areas of the country that have large mass transit systems uh, have this occurrence all the time where it's constantly, you know, we have no money, we have no money, we have no money. So I think as a society, we need to make up our mind. And I heard there was a, I heard on the news a few weeks ago that they did a survey in Maryland of people and seeing what they wanted for transportation. And 62% said they want more roads and highways. So how are you going to have public transportation if everybody just wants to, you know, get in their car and, and drive on the highway? And we all have to pay for those highways. It's not only building the highways and that, but the constant maintenance is lots and lots of money. So the money we're spending on all that maintenance for all the highways is robbing money for public transportation. Uh, because we don't want to have public transportation. We're not putting ourselves into that like other places have done. So there you are. That's, that's some of the, yeah, that's the 30 years of experience of TPB speaking.
See any other, uh, comments from council? There's a couple of comments online. Let's see. Ms. Poppy, do you want to read them?
Sure. Um, Susan Walker from 35 Ridge asks, which routes would remain?
The routes that I didn't mention. I don't have a list. Um, they, what they proposed were the list of routes that would be cut. So if they aren't, that if we didn't mention them and I can, um, highlight them again, uh, they would still remain under this proposal. Uh, hold on, I have a handier list than in the memo. So the ones we highlighted are the G12 and the R12 for elimination. Those are the only two for full elimination. The C2, C4 and T18 for service reductions and the 83, 86 for no weekend service. Um, there would be no, uh, and then the T14, uh, a reduction in the length of the route. Otherwise, um, there would be no changes to the service.
Okay. And resident Michael Thom, Thompson says they also want to start running Metro at 6:00 AM, which would be bus and rail. And he also commented that they propose eliminating the Metro Bus 89M as well.
That's another bus that services Laurel or north of here.
I'm not sure about the, uh, is, was that a question about 6:00 AM?
It was just a comment.
Okay.
The span of service, I guess. I, I think on this letter, we should, uh, you know, CC the county. I'm very concerned about what the county is thinking, what they may plan on doing. And, uh, this proposal to cut the G12, if, if the 11 bus is also cut back. And I think I'm, just am really concerned about what the county is planning. We, uh, need that link to public transportation. So many people that work, uh, in the district and other locations uh, would prefer to use public transportation, uh, if it were frequent and reliable. But, but the problem is, uh, cuts have, have made it so the, the frequency of services is not convenient. Also, the same thing is true with the Mark trains. If, if the Mark. If if the Mark trains uh ran on a regular basis, except just at peak, peak hours, rush hours, I think people would actually take that back and forth from Union Station. It's so convenient.
And by CCing the county, are you referring to DPWNT?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see. We have a question. Mr. Orleans?
Question or comment? I appreciate the letter, draft letter that council may will, maybe will endorse sending to the Board of Directors of Womata. But as was pointed out uh by members of council, this is really a Maryland decision uh without trying to disparage the members of the Board of Directors of Womata. Uh, and some of them are elected to their own positions, but they are all appointed to the board. Their appointing authorities, which is Maryland, Virginia and the district, uh really determine uh what the budget will be. The Board of Directors will vote on it. The first of the public hearings was tonight, by the way. There was a couple of Greenbelders in the audience. I don't know if they spoke. I had to leave. Uh, one Greenbelder spoke at the Board of Directors meeting last week and urged that there be no cuts, no, that the Womata's budget should not uh be balanced on the balance, uh on the backs of bus riders, working class bus riders. But that notwithstanding, if Maryland, notwithstanding the governor and his legislative support for his 150 million or 40 million, I think it was, if Maryland were to commit to more than that, since the way Metro works is that the states, the three states, pretty much pay for their own bus service, uh such cuts as the G 12 would not occur. Uh, so while writing to the Board of Directors urging them to be less severe in what they vote to do, it's equally as important to contact Senator Washington and delegates Martinez, Healy and Williams. And as the mayor suggested, PG CMA and the Montgomery County Municipal Association should contact all of their delegation members and uh remonstrate with them that uh what the governor and Maryland General Assembly should do before they leave in April is to commit to much more than the 140 and or 50 million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Sumaro?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also want to point uh our citizens to a Womata survey, uh Metro Rail Metro Bus Survey. That's on our website and our social media channels. Uh, Womata soliciting feedback on these proposed changes. Uh, there'll be public hearings that'll be held on this this week. So we encourage residents to complete that survey because the data is important.
Well, thank you, thank you. The uh public hearings, do you have the uh the dates or times of public hearings that are coming?
I do not, but I'll make sure that.
They're right at the beginning here, let me tell you.
Okay.
Sorry. They're at the top of the memo here. Um, tonight, as Mr. Orleans mentioned, it was actually um Maryland's at 6:00 PM. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And I might have gotten the third date wrong. I believe it's the day after at 6:00 PM. I can look that up as well. There was also a virtual public hearing on the 29th at 12:00 PM um for folks who don't or cannot attend in person. And then um the survey is, as mentioned as well. Surveys and written comments are due by Tuesday, 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 5.
Okay, and this this correspondence that we're forwarding is actually our public comment. That'll be entered into the record as our public comment, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see, is Susan Walker on? Did she want uh, is she still with her hand up?
She still has her hand up.
Okay, let's see if we can.
Promote her?
Go ahead and promote her.
Okay, allow her to talk.
Good evening, Susan Walker. Are you there?
Yeah, I I just wanted to um ask, you know, if the, if the um, you know, what bus is remaining, and she said she didn't have that, so I'll try to find that out. But I think there's a G 14, a G 16 that come from New Carrollton. And that was, I don't think that was mentioned, or if it's been changed to the T's, maybe it.
I believe that the G 14, the frequency may be cut, but that route.
They're not changing anything. They're not proposing to change the G 14.
The G 14 is the same. You mentioned the 16, that's a county bus. So we don't know of any change that's connected with that.
Would not be affected by this. It's, yes, because it's not a Womata.
What was the third one you asked about, Ms. Walker?
No, those are the only two.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, if there are no further questions, let's go ahead and take a vote on that motion. Uh, we already have a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, thank you, Ms. Fear. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item number 12. That's uh ball field maintenance equipment. And Bryant Townsend from uh Public Works is here to uh to speak with us. In FY 23, the city council approved 2.35 million for ball field improvements out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. These funds were allocated to park improvements and renovations. Of the approved 2.35 million, $325,500 is to be allocated for the purchase of ball field maintenance equipment. Enclosed in council's pack is a memorandum outlining the essential equipment identified by staff to provide maintenance to existing and seem to be improved ball fields. Uh, staff is seeking approval of expending the $325,500 in ARPA funds for that equipment listed in the enclosed document. Uh, Mr. Townsend, how are you tonight?
I'm doing good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Um, we're very happy to be involved with the um process of our ball field improvements. And um what we have produced is a a list with on with multiple staff members to come out with supporting equipment for those new improvements. If um you could pull up the attachment. Down to the second one, please. So what we've done is we've gone back through our equipment list and we've looked at just the tractors and equipment that we have already existing and that is old, and also new equipment that we feel that would be a benefit to these new ball fields. Number one is a 1988 tractor that we have right now that we're using to cut um the ball fields and main fields. Uh, that's a large tractor. Along with that is item number two, which is the bat wing mower itself. This is, that's the attachment that goes onto that mower or under that tractor for using for cutting it. Um, so that's the justification for those two pieces of equipment. Number three is a ball field groomer. This thing is 1995. It's like a dirt rake that hangs on the back of a tractor. And it does the grooming of the fields and fields. Uh, we've modified it quite often because it didn't do the job it was supposed to do. And we originally purchased it because the field's grown and our expectations for upkeeping the field have grown. Um, but it's been done very well, but it's a very old piece of equipment and it needs to be replaced. Uh, number four is a new piece of equipment, which is the mini track loader. This one is a 44 inch bucket for the infield grading and brush, has a brush running attachment that will be used for cutting the outside edges of the field, like towards the wooded side. So if you're familiar with Braden Field, how we have that swale that's on the backside of it and wooded sections, anywhere there's a wood section, this this thing will actually cut through up to two to three inches diameter of wood. So if there's any trees coming up and stuff that we have to cut for maintenance, that's what that would be used for. And the bucket part of it would be used to degrade or ingrate the infield itself and haul dirt out of it. Number five is a new piece of equipment, which is an RTV with a dump. This is a Kubota little two, two seater with a dump. It, the idea for this is we wouldn't have to drive our trucks, our big heavy trucks on there to go out in the field to do any kind of maintenance. And then staff could actually, if they needed to do like infield uh mix or any of the dry mixes and stuff like that, they can put that on the track in the back of that thing and drive it right out in the field and do the the equipment. We will be getting uh, well, also comes with an attachment that's for uh snow um plow. And that attachment would be used for doing any of the sidewalks going out to the fields or any of the, any of this stuff for events that may be happening during the winter months. So far, any questions?
No, no, keep going.
Okay. Feel like I'm just rattling off. So, and then um number six is a 2006 tractor, which is not that as old. But um this actually pulls the infield groomer, utilizes air raider cedar and field turf maintenance. If you remember, um prior year, we just got a new air raider cedar. So this would complement that purchase with that. Um, it matched that tractor. Number seven is a, is a zero turn. This one was a bigger cutting mower that we do not have at this time either. Um, it's a 90, I think a 96 inch cut mower, which would make it very easy for us to cut the fields and smaller areas that we need to get, that we couldn't get with the big bat wing tractor. So that's good for the outfields, but not the infields and around bleachers and et cetera. Um, number eight, which is a stand on blower, which is a Ferris. With that is a, is a small little track ridden blower that she just runs right out in the fields. We can clean all of that off. We could do that on tennis courts. We can do it on, on walkways, paths. And what it does is it's it's a very small piece of equipment, very maneuverable. It's able to get in and get out without making much damage to turf or anything else or disturbing citizens. Number nine, this one is a trailer to transport or equipment that we're we're purchasing. Uh, this one's a heavier duty trailer. The one that we're, it will be, it will be replacing is a 1985 trailer. This is a very, that's a very old trailer. We've, we've, we've been nursing that thing along and we've pushed it back on our replacement list, replacement list, just because we could keep going with it. Um, but it's, it no longer has power brakes and a couple of other things, issues that have come up with it. Um, so we've.
Brakes are important.
Yeah.
Alarming.
Well, trailers are not required, but you know, it's, it's a, it's a new thing. It's about time to be replaced. Um, number 10, this is a trailer that's an enclosed trailer. Uh, you know, if we just purchased the new stage this past.
Right, it's pretty, pretty large, these are the pieces.
So um with that new stage, this would consist of putting that's, that whole stage would be inside of that. That would be held for any kind of events that we had on the ball fields, if they had any, if recreation needed it. Anywhere else, any events that we have, we can use this for that. Um, but the towels that ties in the ball fields is that it can be used anywhere, anytime. Um, we don't have to use just the stage. If we need it for anything else to transport stuff during events, we could pull that stuff out, put that stuff in there and like leave it in there for overnight.
Right. Yes. Hey, uh before, it's uh, can you hold on for just a second, Mr. Roberts? Let him finish. Want to ask a question now?
I want to ask it now.
Go ahead.
Before we move on too far. I'm wondering about all the trailers and uh, you know, we buy all this new stuff, but you have a rollback truck down there that I don't rarely even see being used, and it can haul all that stuff. So why do we need all these new trailers and stuff? I I think this whole thing is, uh, to me is kind of disturbing because, you know, we're we're just replacing stuff, you know, it seems like we're kids in a candy store here. And all those tractors and stuff, you you know, 1995, it's not old for a tractor. Tractors can last for, you know, 50 years. All you gotta do is maintain them. And so I don't, I don't see this as an improvement to our playing fields. You know, this is, you know, stuff that we should be buying in the course of, you know, our, our duties, but not, you know, this big, oh, we gotta have all this to fix our fields. When we have a part of our community over there that's getting, you know, next to nothing out of this whole process, and we're going to spend $300,000 on a bunch of tractors and stuff. I'm sorry, but it it disturbs me because it doesn't seem the, to be a good way to uh spread the wealth around our community.
Uh, Ms. Pope?
Yeah, so thank you very much for your report. And I would, I would, I would like to move that we approved the expenditure of $352,500 of ARPA money for the equipment listed in enclosed document, which is a part of the already allotted 2.35 million for purchases like this. Um, I do, I do believe in the professionalism in your, in your um, you know, what you, in your, in your statements, what you're telling me about all these trailers and cutters and blowers and mowers and whatever you need. So um, you know, um, I do believe that things can last 50 years. I don't know in in this case if these items are able to sustain that, that lifespan, right? Because we're now at 2024 and you said it's from 95 or something. So it's quite old, some of these items. So um I do think that it, you know, we need to improve, update, upgrade and also be safe while we're doing it. And of course, our ball fields need the, the, the necessary equipment once we have it all fixed up to, to keep it that way, because that is a big issue in our city. So um, so I made my.
Made a motion. Is there a second?
Why are we second? Could I just hear about the last item on the list, please?
Okay. Yes.
Actually, actually, there's a motion on the floor, so, but we can still discuss after the, you know, we can, after a motion has been seconded, that's when you have discussions. So I I certainly like to hear, but if you'd like to just second this tentatively and then we can discuss it. No, no, no. Anybody, any takers?
I'd like to hear the rest of it first.
So your motion fails, Ms. Pope, because. Well, okay, I second it.
Thank you.
Okay, so item.
Please continue.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a compact excavator, which is used for infrastructure for the maintenance and associated with connecting the ball field maintenance, drainage swales and Braden, McDonald's and Shrum. And as, as Mr. Roberts pointed out, six of the items on this list are on the replacement list or were on the replacement list and need to be replaced. Um, this would be a good opportunity, especially for the budget, not to have this encumbered later than matter than now. Um, it comes out to $186,000 off the reserve for our replacement budget.
Hey, well, thank you, thank you. The, the reason why I seconded the motion is because, well, a couple of reasons. This is American Rescue Plan funding. It's one-time funding. And it's to really, uh, in this case, it's the, it's an investment in our future. And we consider our parks, our ball fields as a part of our infrastructure. It's a part of the backbone of our community. So these are all expenses, more than half are expenses that needed to be incurred. And, you know, given the, the outlook for the budget this year and in the next couple of years, this is an opportunity to really make these investments, an opportunity that we would not have otherwise. But I did want to ask, uh, so a lot of, several of these items were from 1995. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's 30 years, 30 years. And that's, that's a little bit of a stretch of time. And how, how long would you anticipate that these purchases would uh last? Just off the top of your head, are these 10-year purchases or 15-year?
Oh, no, no. We, we normally figure our, our equipment like that, big, one-time big equipment is usually a 20-year replacement.
So it's, it's a 20-year investment in our.
And then once we get to 20 years, we evaluate the piece of equipment, determine if it needs to be replaced. If not, we push it back. I mean, like in 1995, I mean, it's over 20 years. We just keep pushing it back. Trailers don't need a lot of maintenance, but once, after 30 years, you, you, I think it's time to retire it.
Uh, other comments? Yeah, Mr. Roberts, please go ahead.
Well, I, I think the problem is that, you know, you want to spend this money because it's ARPA money. But the fact is, this is money that's getting spent here in the middle of town. Because the people in Greenbelt West, the kids over there, they don't have a single field to play on, nothing. So you're making this $300,000 investment in old Greenbelt. And to, maybe you might use some of it in Greenbelt East, because we do have fields over there. But it's not an investment for the people that are living, for the kids that are in Greenbelt West. And that's what we should be spending our ARPA money on, not on equipment that we're going to buy anyway over the course of years. We should be saving this ARPA money for the kids that need it in Greenbelt West, not investing it in equipment for Braden Field, for the kids that live here, because that's been going on for too long, and we need to change this situation. And that's why I'm voting against this motion. We can, we can invest in this equipment as we do on a normal course. But this ARPA money is important because we only have it once. And if we don't invest it wisely into the people that need it the most, then it's never going to get to the people that need it most, because it's going to be gone, spent on things like this and air conditioners and other things. And that's why we need to change right now and say, no, this is not a good use for our ARPA money. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, not to get into a back and forth, but, you know, if you look at where we've actually spent the ARPA money, you know, the majority of it has been above and beyond lost revenue, has been on people. And yes, it has. And, and if you actually look at, uh, at rental, rental assistance and other things, you know, so, you know, you're.
How many playing fields are we creating for the kids in Greenbelt West with this ARPA money? The twenty-one million that you're saying we spent on the people?
There's, there's no room, there's no place, the city doesn't own any property.
We spent less than three million dollars on the people, which includes.
Please.
Help with apartment rent and stuff like that. The rest, the mass majority is going to stuff that, you know, it's just going away. It's not spent on the people, it's spent on things, things.
We can provide you with another breakdown of where the ARPA funds are going, if you like. And you're welcome to actually read it. If you'd like to, uh, we can vote, Amy, please.
Yeah, I just had a question, please. I know that you said that about more than half of this would be spent, spending down or taking place, sorry, taking costs out of the replacement reserves fund. And so we would be replacing things. Of the things that you have added that are not on the list to be replaced, why have they been included on here and which are they?
Uh, because this presented a unique opportunity to use things that we couldn't normally get. Like, uh, any, like, we'll just go take, for example, the mini track loader. So that thing is made with, um, tracks on it and not wheels. So the weight distribution, um, the big thing for ball fields and football fields, most fields is soil compaction. When you have a lot of people playing on, on fields and you have heavy equipment, it will compact the soil and then what happens is it's detrimental to the grass growing and the turf is a very vital and safety part of playing on fields. So we want to use any machinery that we can use to make things more safer for the people that are playing and using the fields.
Yes, they are. We just had Coach K here saying that he needs to use the usage of Braden Field. He was just here saying that, right?
They couldn't even use it last year.
They cannot use it because it's not usable right now because the kids will break their ankles.
They have no fields in Greenbelt West.
Why don't you ask Franklin Park to build a field?
You're just going around and around.
This is three hundred thousand dollars that should go towards that, towards buying land or whatever we had, need to do.
Mr. Roberts.
Provide that for the kids over there.
Direct you to the information.
That should go there, not on equipment.
Money has been allocated and I'd like to urge you to actually read it. We'll take a question from Mr. Orleans and then we'll vote. Comment, excuse me, and there's a comment online.
Thank you, I have a question. I was curious about the closed session that was referenced earlier. Apparently it was not, uh, having to do with, uh, property acquisition. I take it it was not acquiring property in Franklin Park for any recreational purpose, as has been suggested in the recent and distant past. For a long while Franklin Park was not utilizing one of its pools. There was adjacent property, uh, and in fact, the property of their leasing office, which could easily be relocated to their mall area where they have offices. A good piece, a chunk of, uh, Franklin Park owned land, uh, could be, uh, separated from Franklin Park management, whether it would continue to be owned by Franklin Park or the city of Greenbelt is another question. But you can find a good chunk of land in Franklin Park along Spring Hill Drive to create a substantial sized ball field and, uh, maybe not the same size pool, but also an aquatic facility. I certainly agree with Councilmember Roberts that it would be in Greenbelt's interest, I don't know about this council's interest, but in Greenbelt's interest to advance, uh, recreational opportunities for, especially for kids in Franklin Park. I will, uh, agree that I did hear Coach K indicate that they use Braden Field as well and would like that field improved. So I have no problem with the improving Braden Field. Although, you know, years ago, it was, the, the rate, question was raised that maybe we could convert Braden Field into a farm area and kind of expand Greenbelt's gardens, uh, into a farm, uh, on Braden, but maybe not. Anyway, my opposition from the very beginning to the city's use of ARPA funds is that most of it has been, too much of it has been used for things, as was pointed out by Councilman Roberts, something that the city, if it was really in or necessary for us to procure, we would procure it anyway with our own funds. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we have a, a comment online. Uh, I believe it's Mr. Rudd. Mr. Rudd, are you there?
Yes, I, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for recognizing me. I'm incredibly astounded to, so listen to Mr. Roberts and somebody else who just recently spoke, uh, in terms of redefining history here. More money from ARPA funds was spent overall collectively on Greenbelt West than the other two sections of Greenbelt combined. Now, in terms of athletic fields, doesn't really matter. Majority of kids are going to use the fields, that's the important thing. And we have fields already established throughout Greenbelt without trying to purchase private land, without trying to further tax property owners by taxing them in the future to pay for the debt to buy land from Franklin Park or other areas, put the money towards the fields that we already have, utilize them for all the children of Greenbelt rather than be discriminatory and saying we have to double our, our fields now, et cetera, in various sections so that each section has the exact same amount, et cetera. That does not make sense, it is not good stewardship. And in an era when the city is darn near approaching being broke, not a good idea to do. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I urge the council to follow your lead and vote as you've been saying. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the, the motion does carry, I believe.
Four to.
Four to two, yeah. Mr. Towson?
Yes.
How are our fields looking for baseball, uh, baseball season this year?
We, we haven't even started working on the baseball field yet this year.
But when are you going to start? I mean, it's, it's almost April.
Well, that's correct. Our team is pretty efficient about getting out there and getting the work done. They'll be starting shortly, I would say probably in the next few weeks, if not sooner.
And what about, uh, over at Shrum Hills and, and the other fields? What sort of maintenance activities do we have going on, uh, there?
Well, Shrum Hills has been, is utilized a little bit during the winter, especially for mostly pickup, pickup games and soccer, stuff like that. But, uh, the only real maintenance is there's no grass cutting, it's just more or less picking up litter, making sure there's no, um, leaves on the field. We've moved some things around. But other than that, it hasn't been a lot of maintenance during the winter months. Most we've been, most of our stuff has been upkeeping on equipment and other parks.
How about Mandan Road? There's the Board of Education property over there that's actually used a bit for soccer.
So, um, that field, uh, it is Board of Education. We don't utilize it and I'm sure that the Recreation Department doesn't plan, plan on anything on there. The only thing that goes on there is pickup games. The, we brought the fact about the compactions, soil compaction. It is so bad there, it's almost like cement. If people play on it, you're taking a good chance of getting severely hurt. So we've, we've, we've stopped, we stopped maintaining that except for just cutting it and keeping it and looking nice, that's it.
And finally, and, and Mr. Kim could probably pipe in, the schedule for the renovations, rebuilding the playground there at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. When is that going to start? She's stepped to the microphone, please.
That project is actually being driven by recreation, but I understand from recreation that they should be opened up by the springtime.
Right.
Similar to that of Buddy Attic Lake.
Excellent. And so, uh, City Manager, uh, and, uh, Tim, George, how, how much money are we putting into the Spring Hill Lake Recreation?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Half a million dollars?
A million dollars, okay, thank you. And this was money that we had initially planned on, on doing the design and bill for extend, expanding the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, but that was not enough money to expand the recreation facility. So it was, uh, reallocated to building the new playground, new basketball courts and, uh, gardening areas.
And, and that's also not including the, the funding, the work that's being contemplated for indoors in terms of, uh, the, the front desk and redoing, uh, the, the layout?
Correct, so, uh, Mr. Kim is currently working on the items that we identified during our walkthrough, making some improvements to the entrance of the facility. We had, we had already planned to resurface the basketball court in the next fiscal year. And we're reviewing the schedule for, uh, resurfacing that basketball court. It takes, uh, it gets more use. And so we're gonna have a, an accelerated, a, a shorter maintenance schedule for that to make sure that that court is in, uh, good playing condition as much as possible.
So it sounds like we're talking six to seven hundred thousand dollars.
We don't have a budget item for the improvements. I don't know if, if, uh.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to address, um, the issues that, uh, staff has raised, that, you know, that fall within our operating budget currently. Having said that, we are currently pricing out other projects that will have, take a little bit more discussion as far as costs and where those costs will originate from, but we're actively pursuing all options.
Yeah, I think that helps to put things in perspective, Ms. Councilmember.
Just one thing, we've been talking with city, we, we do actually have land in Greenbelt West that if we wanted to actually do more recreation space in fields, we, we could do that. But with that being said, we do also need, you know, good equipment for when we actually do put that in to maintain that. So, I'm sorry, on the pathway where Indian Creek Trail is, there's a whole long stretch that we currently own.
So, so what's really.
I'll show, I'll send you the pictures of it. I walk it every morning.
That's a good point, we have not really made plans for what we're going to do there. It is floodplain.
So what's really driving this list is, is the capital investment made in upgrading all the fields. I mean, it, it's a, it's a huge expense. So having said that, you, you really need the equipment to maintain, you know, that capital investment of two million dollars. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a big investment that the city's making to upgrade all the fields. And, and, and I believe that, you know, I've seen some of the preliminary plans, they look fantastic. So, I mean, it would be in our best interest to support them, you know, equipment wise.
Appreciate that, thank you so much, Ms. Councilmember.
Um, I just was wondering about the, um, the fields at Northway. What kind of maintenance and, uh, do we do? I know there's a ball field there, but I don't believe that Greenbelt, when my kids were in Greenbelt East Baseball, we used to just use it for practice. I don't think it was used as an official.
Yeah, that's correct. I know that there's a, a summer kickball league that goes there. I, I do understand that, um, owners or pets use it to, to kind of play with their pets and, and whatnot. I think Towns can speak more of that, what we do there, but I don't know if that's actually on the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
Comment on the Northway Fields. At one time, we had a plan, uh, to fix the fields down there because they're oriented in the wrong direction. So you get the sun in your eyes at certain times when they want to play. And, uh, so we had a plan to, uh, redo the fields at Northway. But that kind of mysteriously disappeared. So I'm wondering what happened to that and is that ever gonna, are we ever gonna fix those fields? Since you have all this wonderful equipment, you know, you should be able to take care of that.
I, I mean, I can talk to recreation, I can't really speak to, you know, what the exact plans are, but, I mean, I'm happy to do wherever they send us.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Hey, let's move on to item number thirteen, which is approval of engineering services for preparation of pre-construction documents for the interior pool debt remediation at the Aquatic and Fitness Center. And Mr. Kim is here to talk with us about that. In early December, the Department of Recreation asked the Public Works Department to look into drainage issues around the, uh, along the interior pool decks far end, the deep end of the pool. During the site investigation, staff noticed water pooling and settling between the finished surface of the tile floor and the precast pool surface deck. Engineer of record structural concrete remediation contractor and two structural engineering firms were brought in to provide professional recommendations with regard to a remediation plan. Staff has, you've carefully, uh, reviewed the proposal, met with, uh, SME and found the CA Linderman to be the best value for the city of Greenbelt in terms of a structural contract remediation contractor. So the CA Lindman has completed projects of similar size and has the ability to meet the required project completion milestones. So staff is recommending the council approve the purchase of the pre-construction engineering services of CA Lindman in the amount of thirty-three thousand, a hundred and eighty-four dollars and third-party engineering quality assurance services to CP Johnson in the amount of five thousand dollars for a total expenditure of thirty, thirty-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-four dollars. So, Mr. Kim, uh, I guess it was last week, uh, council, some council members, the city manager, were able to take a look at, uh, the conditions that are pointed out here, uh, of the pool, the, uh, deck, the interior pool deck surface at the far end, the deep end. And, uh, frankly, we, we were shocked, uh, at, at the conditions that are existing there right now. So this, this proposal here is, is part of a larger plan to, to really deal with the condition of the pool. And I, I don't think the public is really aware of the severity or the size of, of this, uh, the repairs that, that are necessary at this point. So can you, uh, kind of bring, bring us and bring the public up to speed a little bit about what's going on with the pool and what, what it's going to take to really bring it back into, uh, into a safe and manageable condition? Not so much safe, well, it is safety, but, you know, this is major, uh, repair work has to be done. It has to be expedited.
That, that's correct. So there, there's an issue with the drainage and, and essentially what's happening is, is the pool, the pooling or the water is settling between, um, two layers and it's not actually going into the drain. And that's exasperating the situation from beneath. So we really won't know what the full extent is until this engineering study is actually done. But it is, it is, you know, I don't want to be too alarming, it, it is a serious issue. It, it really needs to be investigated. And this is what it's going to take to do that. It's a, it's a very robust plan. We've spoken to several subject matter experts regarding the issue and doing our due diligence. We had that checked and rechecked and the consensus was basically the same, that there is a serious issue that needs to be looked at.
So what I and what we saw in, in touring and taking a look at what was going on, as you said, uh, water was sort of settling between the, uh, the pool lining and, and the, uh, concrete exterior. And, and looking from underneath, we could see the steel rebarb that connects the, the concrete together. It was in poor condition.
Yeah, so all the, all the M E P, all the mechanical, electrical and plumbing is actually hung from the precast, uh, decking underneath. So having said that, you can see that there's water pressure penetration going down and it's corroding, metal that shouldn't be corroded. And having said that, we've already replaced that, did that maybe three years ago. And the damage is accelerating, it's, it's much faster. We thought that the Unistut traps and, and stainless steel all thread and all that would hold, it, it really isn't. You have, also you have pressurized pipe down there, fire alarm system, sprinkler system that's basically pressurized. We've had to replace a number of those fittings because they were just corroded. I mean, it could just explode at any point, causing, then causing a serious safety issue.
Right, right. So this, this, uh, study or the in, bringing in the structural engineers to assess this and really take a look at exactly what needs to be done, it's, it's like the first step.
That's correct. So the, the engineering phase of it is very, very extensive. I mean, it's, it's basically any and every test that you can do, uh, from visual to acoustic. They're also proposing, um, uh, basically an X-ray of, of the interior deck to see what's, what's actually damaged. what's, what's actually damaged.
See that it's structurally sound.
That's correct. There's also intrusive sampling cores. So there, there will be some demolition taking place as well to actually visually.
So what I'm driving at is, uh, this process, uh, that, that needs to happen, uh, might, likely will result in, in the pool being closed for as much as eight or nine months. Is that correct?
So, so there is possible impact to staff and, um, citizens. We, we're really not comfortable actually, um, you know, that, that's what's been informally said. Having said that, we'll know more once the study is done. And at that point, we can further explain. Uh, but we are, we are moving in a direction where we will tell the engineers that any, any remediation efforts that do need to occur, we would like the route that had the least amount of impact to citizens and staff. I mean, that's ultimately our end goal. But there is possible impact, correct.
And that's why it's so important for us to do this now before the situation gets any worse and just taking the steps, doing what has to be done. But I just wanna make sure that the, the public is aware of, uh, your thinking, uh, the administration's thinking, uh, about, uh, the situation and how, what we need to do to, uh, to preserve, uh, preserve the, the structural integrity of, of the pool. And we, we just did something else recently. Uh, Mr. Samron?
Ms. Matt, thank you. I'd like to jump in. Um, we're, we're taking the matter seriously and we're hearing, we, we've discussed this issue with seri- several, uh, subject matter experts and we're hearing a variety of opinion and we wanna be precise as best as we can with such a critical asset of our community. So that's why we're, we're, we wanna expedite this X-ray as Mr. Kim is saying, the X-ray of the, of the decks so that we know exactly what those issues are, how to address it so that we can, uh, do the right act, the, the right work, uh, on this project. So we don't wanna tear anything out without any certainty of what exactly the issue is. But yes, it would ultimately result in, in disruption to the services that our residents have become accustomed to getting at our pool, um, employees and just our organization as a whole. But we're considering all options. Just today, we were talking about the possibility of extending the hours of our pool, or of our outdoor pool to make sure that our residents have, uh, access to the, the aquatic center and swimming. So we're gonna look at all options to, to make sure that we provide as much service to our residents. Uh, we're, we're even gonna, uh, explore the possibility of heating the outdoor pool so that we can extend, uh, the time that, that our pool's available.
Didn't mean to be an alarmist, but I was kind of putting the worst-case scenario out there because people, our residents, need to understand. Uh, Ms. Pope?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the purchase of pre-construction engineering services to C.A. Lindman in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and third-party engineering quality assurance services to CPJ in the amount of five thousand dollars for a total expenditure of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, additional questions? So, uh, when would, uh, when would these, uh, this, uh, company, when would this occur?
I understood that they would be onsite to start within two weeks of signing the proposal.
Would there be disruptions to, to pool operations while they're working?
There shouldn't be. Uh, but again, there is some destructive testing or sampling that will occur. We'll try to minimize the impact, we can isolate it and, but, and they do, we do need to take it in certain areas of the area, but it should be minimal at best.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
And some of the areas are already quartered off. There's, uh, cones to, uh, prevent people from stepping into the, the areas that are of concern.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion does carry. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, let's move on to item number fourteen, legislative bill review. Uh, we've got a couple of, uh, bills here. Uh, let's see, is Mr. Carrington around?
No, he had to go.
Okay, okay. So we've got a couple of things to talk about, just in terms of how, how we're going to go about, uh, approving and moving forward with, uh, expressing council's feelings on, on various bills. Uh, now that we have Mr. Carrington working with us, he'll be providing weekly updates. Uh, those will be going out to the city manager, to Mr. George, and they'll also be distributed to, uh, to council. In addition to that, we should be getting updates from the Maryland Municipal League on bills that they are tracking, as well as the Prince George's County Municipal Association. PG CMA, they're having, uh, weekly calls at eight A.M. talking about the legislation that they are tracking. Uh, but as was said a little bit earlier, uh, during the meet and greet, sometimes the bills that are being advocated for by the municipal league and by PG CMA do not necessarily coincide with, with our strongest interest. So because these bills, uh, getting a letter of support or opposition or support with amendment, uh, is very time-sensitive as well as opportunities to, uh, to testify on some of the bills when appropriate happen. Uh, I think we need to be flexible about, uh, trying to, uh, reach a consensus on, on how, how we proceed. So we'll be talking about, uh, bill review on a regular basis on our agendas, probably for the next, uh, four weeks or so, four or five weeks. We're just about at the crossover point where bills have to be cross-fired on the Senate as well as the House side on the, uh, state legislative matters, but also the county is very, very active in their legislation. And we're actually going to be having a work session with, uh, County Council Member Watson and, and perhaps other members of the county council as well.
The two at-large council members.
Yes, two at-large county council members. And in addition, we do have a meeting coming up, uh, dinner with our, uh, state delegates and state senator. What's the date of that?
The twentieth.
The twentieth, correct. Okay, so please, uh, block that off in your calendar. We'll carpool out there and, uh, talk with them about our legislative priorities. So for tonight, formally, we've got, uh, just one bill in front of us, which is Senate Bill zero-six-five-four, House Bill zero-eight-two-one, Prince George's County Student Support Specialist Networks and Success Action Plans. Uh, this bill establishes a student, uh, support specialist network with specified membership in each public high school in Prince George's County, requires each network to develop, complete, and implement a student support success plan. To support each network in developing plans, Prince George's County Board of Education must by August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, develop, approve, and disseminate a template for a student support success action plan with specified elements. And the county board must, uh, also set a deadline for submission of plans for the approval of networks. Uh, each network must, uh, submit a plan as well July the first, twenty-twenty-five. So it's recommended that council support the Senate bill. And Ms. Poppy, did you actually, uh, ask to get this on the agenda or is this? This seems like a pretty good bill. Who, who, uh, introduced it?
This is one of the, the bills we read through that ensured that all students are getting the same amount of services at all the, at all the community schools so that, uh, it provide, it requires a minimum standard of care and service at the schools. So we think it's a, it's a fair approach to ensure that all the schools are receiving this at minimum, the same level of service.
Seems pretty straightforward to me. Is there any, uh, additional discussion?
Just a question, and maybe this is for Mr. Carrington when we talk about it. It would just be interesting to know how, if, what the implementation of this will look like and whether or not they have the resources to be able to actually implement it. Cause I know this system itself is, has a budget shortfall. So is this gonna take additional resources to be able to implement this and implement it effectively? So you wanna put something in place that's gonna work, yes, at, at surface level, it looks like it, but if they're not gonna have the people to do it, then that, that wouldn't make sense. So if we could have some more information about what the implementation plan might look like, that would be helpful.
And who is implementing that in the schools? Because that's another issue, cause, you know, this community school program sounded all very good and, but, um, I, I just wonder how, what, what their reports are on how successful they are because maybe what I'm seeing and what we, what we hear might be different than what they, what they actually experience. But of course, I work in a community school, so, uh, so just saying. So I don't know if I wanna vote for this or not.
Well, uh, questions are a good one, particularly around the resources. Uh, sometimes, you know, a bill is moving forward and we might support it and, you know, it might not really make it all the way, but still, you know, the thought, the intent is, is important. So I don't know if it's council's will to, to hold this and, of course, having Mr. Carrington, uh, to give us some additional, uh, advice and background is, is helpful. Uh, any other comments or anybody wanna make a motion to, to write a letter or do you wanna hold off?
I just, I would say that-
So, so the brief response on all these bills, they're, they're all supposed to be analyzed for fiscal impact. But the challenge I see with a lot of bills is that the intent is great, great idea, but the implementation, the resources, and finding the right fit that works for a community, uh, is challenging at the local level. And, and that's an issue that's, uh, will just continue to recur. You're in a community school, you know those challenges firsthand. Administrative offices, remote locations come up with great ideas, but how do you make them effective on the ground? So it, it, it's a challenge. From, from our perspective there, we wanna, we wanna support all the good ideas. And just like, like juvenile justice reform, great idea, but you gotta fund family, family and youth development programs to fully realize the value of those policies.
Have a way of implementing them also.
Correct.
So I, I don't see any, uh, no one's raising their hand saying, let's, let's support this. What I sense from my colleagues is, uh, that we should hold for more information and okay?
Hold for more information.
I would agree with that.
Okay. And the other, the other bill that's actually on the agenda here is HB zero-nine-five, Maryland Transit Administration Locally Operated Transit Systems Mandatory Funding. This bill requires the governor for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and each fiscal year thereafter to include in the annual budget bill an appropriation from the Transportation Trust Fund of at least eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three, excuse me, eighty million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars to the locally operated transit system grant program for statewide program operations. Uh, this bill would take effect July first, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Samron, you were talking a little bit, or Mr. George, about, about this bill and what it means, what it might mean for us in terms of funding for, uh, transportation improvements here in Greenbelt.
Currently, currently the, the local, local operated transit system does not have, uh, mandated dedicated funding. This bill allows for that. Uh, so we see any effort to cement the allocation of transportation dollars in local transit is a good idea. Um, Mr. Roberts touched on this earlier with, with how transit systems are improperly funded. Well, this is a good example of how local transit is an operating line item that folks get to move around. This bill will require a minimum amount of funding dedicated for local transit systems.
Okay. Uh, let's see, do you know what stage, uh, has this bill, has it been cross-fired? Doesn't look like it has been. So we should probably hold.
Would, would your preference be? W- would your preference be that we bring bills that only have, uh, dual filing? Because if they're, if they're cross-filled, then there's a more likelihood that they are going to be considered for passage. If it, if it's only filed in one chamber, then it might not have, get to the other chamber, especially for the crossover period. So things that don't get cross-fired by the crossover period, that's considered.
Just like a little bit more information on this. So maybe the meeting on the eleventh, you know, uh, we can get greater detail.
It has been cross-fired.
Okay. And what, what's the next step in the process? Is there another hearing coming up or another hearing's not been really scheduled?
February twenty-third, is there a, a hearing date on it?
I see that there's gonna be a hearing on the twenty-seventh at noon.
Oh.
Oh, tomorrow at noon?
Tomorrow at noon. So we probably won't be able to get a letter off to them by tomorrow at noon. It's cross-fired, that's good. So I would say let's, let's track this and continue to, uh, track these two bills to bring them up again at the next, uh, meeting. But council, we, we're gonna have to, uh, dig in and read through these, uh, the information provided by Mr. Carrington and other resources that we can make informed choices so that we can weigh in on these issues that are of great import to the city. Uh, I forwarded in an email several bills that had been, uh, posted, been filed by our delegation and I'd like to, to have them all tracked. I can just read through them very quickly if you like. I, I shared them by email. The first one is Senate Bill zero-five-one-six and that was, uh, filed by, uh, Senator Washington. It, it involves, it involves, uh, establishing an economic development to Maryland Aerospace and Technology Commission, which would be helpful to us and our friends at NASA Goddard. Uh, second one is HB, House Bill zero-three-zero-nine, which has to do with, uh, cooperative housing corporations dispute settlement. We need to check with GHI and find out how they're feeling about this bill. Uh, third one is House Bill zero-three-eight-nine and that's, uh, state highways. Uh, it has to do with maintenance and repair of sidewalks and bicycle pathways, kind of removing the requirement that municipalities take responsibility for the maintenance. Those, there was a hearing on that on Thursday and it's moving forward, but we should weigh in on that. And all of our delegation, uh, delegates, uh, Martinez and Healy and, um, Nicole Williams all, uh, filed, you know, along with, uh, Senator Washington. We should definitely weigh in on that. The fourth one, HB zero-two-one-two, vehicle law, laws, it's, uh, noise abatement monitoring systems. I, I believe Delegate, uh, Lehman, who is in Laurel but has deep ties to, to Greenbelt, has put that forward in College Park. Uh, the city is also strongly advocating for, uh, some, some sort of a system that would allow us to monitor or ticket people with, uh, mufflers or, or things, uh, modifications to their cars that make a lot of noise. And three additional ones, House Bill zero-four-five-seven, which has to do with a chain of custody for synthetic turf. All of our delegates, uh, filed that bill. HB zero-three-four-four, uh, transportation, setting up a zero vision, Vision Zero Advisory Commission, establishing that. And the final one is HB zero-five-one-six, Crisis, Climate Crisis and Environmental Justice Act of twenty-twenty-four. So those are just some bills that our delegation or neighboring delegations have filed that, that I think we should track. Any, any comments or thoughts or any, anybody see any other bills? Please go ahead.
Sorry, I, I don't see another bill, but it's just, this is just a general question. So I know there were two bills pulled out for us here today for review and Mr. Carrington sent us, uh, quite a long bill tracking sheet, I believe it was seventeen pages long. So is he gonna be prioritizing those for us? Cause obviously not every single one of those has the same impact on us here in Greenbelt. So it seems like, like you're saying, we really need to dig into them. We cannot dig into seventeen pages. Would there be like priorities and recommendations for us and is that what we can expect going forward?
Yes, we're, we're trying to do that and that's, uh, starting tonight, we, we put these two, I emailed one earlier today that we, in our initial review, didn't look, it would have a local impact, but after speaking with, with, uh, Mr. Carrington, uh, the, the state looking to establish regional transit boards, it looks like that, that model is going to be the mechanism to fund, um, congestion relief and transportation projects for the FBI. So that bill was interesting because it doesn't explicitly say that, but behind the scenes, he got knowledge that that was the thinking for the administration, that this was a way to fund the FBI congestion relief projects. So there are things that when you read them, we're, we're, we're making our, our best effort to evaluate the impact it has on Greenbelt. Some of them are clear, some of it is not. And so I, I feel, I believe, I strongly believe we're gonna get better at this, uh, over time. This is the first time we're bringing, uh, in this format. But yes, our hope is that we're bringing you only things that are relevant to Greenbelt and that you have an interest in.
Appreciate that. And it's a two-way street, uh, you know, with, with Mr. Carrington. Uh, we have to, uh, communicate, uh, to him, uh, bills that, that are of interest, uh, to Greenbelt based on our conversations with our residents and with our neighboring jurisdictions. So it's, it's a first step, but we are sort of jumping in, in the middle of the session. So this is a start. I, I would like to, uh, since we have not, uh, not taking action on the two bills that are there, like to move on to the next item, but we do have a question from the public.
Thank you. Since I've not had the opportunity to even skim HB 095, the locally operated transit system bill, I can't know what's in it other than what I've heard here, but I'm happy that council is paying attention to it and would suggest that whenever it next scheduled work session with Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, it have a more expansive discussion as to how it uses the lots money it's received in the past. It does for both the bus and call-a-bus. But the regional, Central Maryland Regional Transit also receives lots money. And in fact, they receive some of Prince George's County lots money because Prince George's has conceded to it, the RTS service to College Park and Greenbelt. Why that's the case, I've never understood. But how we, the county, uses in the past and in the future, especially if there's a specific amount designated by statute, how it uses its lots money merits more discussion than in the past we've had when we had that transit work session. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Hey, and with regard to your question, Councilmember Poppy. So Mr. Carrington has, in the report, he's used a color coding system. So the ones that are in red, I would suggest that council take a close look at because I think what you'll find is some of those that are in red are not necessarily bills that would have a direct impact on. So if you are pressed for time, just look at the red ones as closely or we can ask and get more information to prioritize these. Hey, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be item number 15, Council Activities. Let's see, how are we going to do this? Ms. Poppy, you have a list of activities. Do you want to read those or read them into the record?
I'm happy to do that. And please, I just put this together. So if I've missed you, add yourself. If you did things that are not on this list, please amend. So I don't mean to exclude anyone. I did the best I could off the top of my head. So these are council activities between February 13th and today. February 14th, meeting with PGCMLS staff, Ari Tugwell, Room Poppy. February 15th, tour of city facilities, Poppy Weaver, Jordan McKinney. Greenbelt West Produce Distribution, Poppy. 18th February, Black History Month Cultural Program, Poppy Jordan Weaver Neesel. 19th February, ACE Educator Event, Poppy. Greenbelt Elementary School Cleanup, Poppy Weaver Neesel. Troop 214 Chili Supper, Poppy Weaver Neesel. Reel and Neel Weaver. 20th February, PGCMA Legislative Call, Poppy. Franklin Park Tour, Poppy Jordan Neesel Weaver McKinney and Pope. Is that right? 22th February, Greenbelt Middle School, Black History Month Event, Poppy Neesel McKinney. 23th February, NCLR, I'm sorry, NLC EENR introductory call, Poppy. Cookies at the Bridge, McKinney, Poppy, Jordan. 24th February, Greenbelt Reparations Commission, Black History Month Event, Poppy McKinney, Jordan Neesel. Animal Shelter Volunteer Orientation, Poppy. Farmers Market Appreciation Party, Poppy. There are some really good cupcakes there, by the way. 26th February, PGCMA Legislative Call, Jordan and Poppy. Meet and greet with Carrington Associates, Poppy McKinney, Jordan Neesel.
Well, thank you, thank you. I got a couple more. Back on the 14th, I did attend a Maryland Washington Council of Governments Board Meeting. And on the 17th, I had a chance to go. Congressman Hoyer had a Black History Month program with Congressman Ivy. So really good program. And also on the 18th, Governor Moore had a open house at his residence for Black History Month, was able to pop in on. And 23rd, I got to talk with a group, Eleanor Roosevelt High School's AP, one of their AP classes wanted to talk with me about affordable housing in Prince George's County and Greenbelt. And it's always a real pleasure to be able to talk with high school, middle school and elementary school students about different things. So I overloaded them with information. So Ms. Pope or Ms. McKinney, Mr. Roberts?
Ask, any of those people that you went and talked with at Eleanor Roosevelt might want to be part of the Youth Advisory Committee, we'd like to reach out to them.
When I did ask, only one of them actually lived in Greenbelt. So. But yeah, we've got a couple of openings on that Youth Advisory Committee. We have to find a way to fill those openings with eager, young minds, with great ideas and visions for the future. So it shouldn't be that hard to do.
We're working on it.
Hey, item number 16, Council Reports. I want to propose that on Wednesday, you know, we have the work session with our religious leaders. And I would expect that to be, you know, to the point, a good discussion. So I'd like to actually set aside some time at the end of that meeting on Wednesday. If anybody wants to give a report, that's a time when we can do it and we can also talk a little bit more about the calendar. So I'd like to formally kind of add those on to the work session on Wednesday. Unless, are there any objections or? Okay. And item number 17, under Meetings, we've got just to vote on these recommendations. The city clerk has been, staff have been hard at work, sort of ironing out our schedule for the coming year. And so here are the recommendations. No work session on Monday, April 1st, that's Easter Monday. Reschedule Monday, May 27th, regular council meeting to Tuesday, May the 29th, Memorial Day. Reschedule Monday, June 10th, the regular council meeting and Monday, June 24th, regular council meeting to Monday, June 3rd and Monday, June 17th, to adopt the budget before June 10th. And because of MML's Annual Conference in Ocean City, June 23rd through 26th. And by the way, with the MML conference, I believe the registration for hotels is opening up on the 10th or the 11th. And if you want to get a room at the lowest possible price and at a good location, you need to kind of jump in there the first couple of days of registration. But aside from that, no work session on Monday, June 24th and Wednesday, June 26th because of the MML conference. Reschedule Monday, November 11th and Monday, November 25th, regular meetings to Monday, the 4th and Monday, the 18th because of the NLC conference. And no work session once again on November 13th because of the NLC conference. So there's a note that council needs to schedule a work session to discuss council goals. And we need to follow up to January's 27th Council Retreat. And we could possibly do that. We don't have a work session scheduled for next Monday, but we can actually talk about that on Wednesday evening, talk about the calendar in greater. Okay?
Talk about the calendar in greater detail?
Yeah, and specifically about the follow-up to the council retreat, when you want to do that. Because we could do that on a weekend or we could do that.
Yes, I was just also wondering, I don't see like any kind of council sabbatical on here. Like there's no break, like summer break. And I know there was one last year, so I'm hoping there's going to be one this year. So no, that's not on here, so.
Last year, we didn't have meetings in July.
So we would need to try to identify what those dates were as well as, I'm assuming Christmas time or the holiday time, excuse me, as well, just to have a complete calendar for the year.
We have a July break, Bonita, built in? Okay.
Right, so I think we should continue to do that.
So we'll build in a July break?
Yeah.
I think, was it two weeks last July? I can't remember, like the last two weeks or something like.
I don't know if it was two or three, but we would still have to have a meeting for a regular.
One regular meeting, I think it was.
I think there was one regular meeting in July.
What about August? I think there was only one in August. Be great if we could do that again, so we could. Well, and we could also schedule our summer vacations as well, right? Right? I've scheduled mine already. All right, great, thank you.
Okay, so let's get, could somebody make a motion about the changes that were proposed here?
Sure, I'll, I move that we will move council reports and discussion of our meeting calendar to the Wednesday, what's the date? Yeah, the Wednesday, February 28th work session?
Okay. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And also these, the modifications that I just read off that were proposed by the city clerk. I'd like to move that we adopt the recommendations under item 17 that I just read. Which would be no work session on Monday, April 1st, Easter Monday. Reschedule 27th, regular meeting, Tuesday, 29th. Reschedule Monday, June 10th and Monday, June 24th, the regular meetings on June 3rd and June 17th. No work session on Monday, 27th and June 26th. Reschedule Monday, the 11th and Monday, the 25th to November 4th and November 18th. And no work session on November, the 13th. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hey, that's going to bring us down to item number 19, which we took off the consent agenda. And that's a letter to request the County Historic Preservation Commission to designate the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School Building as a county historic site. So staff recommends that council send a letter to the Prince George's County Historic Preservation Commission, requesting a complete historic site evaluation of the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School Building. So this is an action that probably council should have undertaken a while back. When was that, Ms. Pope and Mr. Roberts, when we were talking about the possible?
Like that?
Fifteen, well, that was more like ten.
I don't want to say 15 years ago, but I'm going to say about 10 years ago for sure. How long has Dora Kennedy been there now? How long have? Okay, then it was 10 years because it was before.
When they were building Greenbelt Middle School, before they, when they were building it, the plan initially from the board, school board, was that they were going to dispense with the middle school. And you know, it's a part of our legacy, it's a part of our historic legacy, it's a part of our present and it should be a part of our future. So by making this request to the Historic Preservation Commission, we can kind of formalize how the city feels about the school and the building, the original Greenbelt High School. Mr. Samron, did you have any comments?
Sorry, no, I don't have anything to add. I think this is something you guys, you all have been following for a very long time. And given the news that broke here in this room about what's the plan for that future site, this is a good pragmatic next step to try to preserve that facility.
Ms. Pope?
I just wonder, so if we do that, right? And I see the reason and I have nothing against that. But once that designation is made, right, and there are repairs to be done and then they're very specific, how you can do repairs on a historic building, who is paying for, who isn't, who is in charge of providing the funds for repairs? Well, I mean, the person who owns the building is responsible for it, so.
Not sure, but what this does is before anything can happen to it, it sort of gives us the right to weigh in. So this is like an additional layer of input that the city would have on the disposition of the building.
Well, it ensures that the building would not be demolished.
Right. And the school can choose to do, PGCS, they could choose to maybe cede it back to the county or city, like, I mean, there could, who knows what will happen once it's under historic preservation, but as Mr. Samron said, they will not be able to destroy it though. No matter what happens, that won't happen.
Mr. Roberts?
I think that's a good thing to do, no doubt about that. I mean, it's a good, great statement, but it's not going to keep them from tearing the building down. It's not. I mean, Greenbelt is a national historic landmark, doesn't give us any protection. It sounds good, but it's not protecting any of our buildings or anything else. So, you know, I support doing this, but let's not fool ourselves and think this is, you know, the end of it. You know, even if we get this, doesn't mean they can't tear it down. Because they can go in and say, oh, doesn't matter, you know? And they tear down buildings in DC all the time that have this designation. And I'm sure you know that.
Yes.
So that's a good, like you said, it's a great first step, but let's carry it farther and make sure that the county council knows that they can't tear the building down and they shouldn't be moving the school out of there because they have people relying on that school. And they admitted they did a, that they made the wrong decision and they need to change their decision.
Okay, well, let's get a motion. Would someone like to make this?
I stand corrected on the historical designation. It's no guarantee that it ensures the building is preserved forever. And, but it is a step in that direction.
And I think it does give us another layer of input, the public and the city. So I'll go ahead and if no one else wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Well, what is your motion?
I'm going to move that council send a letter to the Prince George's County Historic Preservation Commission, requesting a complete historic site evaluation of the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School Building.
Okay, and I'll second that. Any discussion? Please go ahead.
Well, just, I see it, I hear it being discussed as Greenbelt High School and Greenbelt Middle School and this says historic Greenbelt Middle School. Is that the official designation by the state? Because if it's the historic Greenbelt High School, should that be changed? I've heard both tonight, so I just wasn't checking.
We call it, it's historically, it's the high school, but it's the Dora Kennedy Middle School Building.
It was a middle school before.
It was Greenbelt Middle School before.
I think Amy's referring to the letter. If you read the letter, it says, on February 26th, the Greenbelt City Council voted unanimously to request. It just, she's just talking about that, it says to designate historic Greenbelt Middle School. So maybe we just want to change that to historic Greenbelt High School. I think, does that sound right, Mr. Roberts? Yeah, that's what I think she's saying.
I think that's a good suggestion. Maybe we should just have staff kind of just double check to verify.
We'll double check them.
First, because I don't think high school sounds correct to me.
So why don't we vote to a friendly amendment that we convey this letter based on the review of staff to verify, the factual verification.
We'll dot our i's and cross our t's here and put parcel number and lot number to just cover all of our bases.
Fantastic. All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. And so there's a meeting coming up with Dora Kennedy French Immersion School, with the school board and parents. Do we have a date or a time on that by any chance?
They didn't have the date and time yet. They did email us and say that they wanted us to attend and they would follow up when they had that. They're still trying to work out the details, so.
Appreciate that. Hey, well, that kind of brings us to the end of our meeting, I believe, except we have to go into executive session. So Ms. Pope, could you read the motion for a closed session?
I move into closed session. I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section 3-305, be one of the general provisions article of the annotated code of the Public General Laws of Maryland. One, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting will be to, one, to address personnel matters over which this public body has jurisdiction. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Is there a second? Councilmember Neesel has seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries. It's 9:58 right now. So I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight. We covered a lot of ground, but we got to go into this executive session now. So if we can clear the room and shut down the Zoom, oh shoot, there's somebody on Zoom.
Excuse me.
Do I have to put a time in here, Emmett?
Do I have to put the time in here, Emmett? No, the time in there, what time is it, nine fifty-eight?
Nine fifty-eight.
Ruben, you want to take a cookie?
Well, I eat my dinner already.
Who's second? Who was second, uh, second?
See ya.
Sandwich.
Of course, sticking around.
Yeah, let's take a quick bio break.
Our body is here.
Yeah.
Didn't find my phone earlier, that's all I was looking.
Where I put it?
I'm trying to make, um, this up.
Gosh, this is.
This, this, this disregard, don't, don't pay attention to the paper.
Oh, you just got stuff stuffed in there.
There's actually five Mondays in July this year. So I was gonna take the first two, two weeks, basically.
I will not be here the last two weeks.
Uh, the last full two weeks?
I'm leaving mid-July probably, for sure.
Yeah, so that's, I was.
For sure.